Evening, I'm calling the September 3rd, 2020 work session of the Keystone Central School District Board of Directors. To order, we will begin with a flag salute and a moment of silence.
I found the meeting, can't hear it.
Okay. Ms. Long, can we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Donahay. Mr. Alling.
I found it, I just can't hear it.
Mr. Johnson.
Here.
Mr. Coke.
President.
Ms. Lynch.
Here.
Mr. Miller.
Here.
Can you hear it?
Probert.
Here.
Mrs. Smith, here. Mr. Strauss.
Here.
Seven members present.
Yes, just click yes. God, hate this.
Okay, we have two presentations tonight. The first one is the Athletics Health and Safety Plan. Ms. Martin, Dr. Martin, I'm sorry.
Would you mind just sharing that document?
I can, I can probably do that.
Difficult to have everybody in the same room logged on individual devices. So as many of you may have heard, yesterday Governor Wolf made some updates to the, his, his order with regards to spectators at athletic events. And while that seems really great, there, there's a lot of challenges to that because there are also parameters around those spectators being able to participate. So in general, I must share with you that regardless of the event, there cannot be more than 250 people at an outdoor event. That includes all of the, the game workers, the athletes, the, anybody that's attending that event. A body counts in that 250 regardless of what their role is. We have a concession stand open or anything, any body counts in that 250. Additionally, indoor events are still limited to 25 folks. So the other parameter around this allowing spectators is that every district has to have a Athletics Health and Safety Plan now that includes something to do with spectators, guidelines for spectators. And then that Health and Safety Plan needs to be attached to the District Safety Plan, which you've already approved, and then resubmitted to PDE. So what I'd like to do this evening is share with you what I pulled together with a few of the administrators this afternoon as a draft Athletics Health and Safety Plan. And with some feedback from this group, I'd like to begin implementing it as early as tomorrow. Even though the board would not have an opportunity to approve the document until next week, what I'd be asking is your approval and retroactively approve it as of today's date. So we had two tennis matches today, but both were canceled due to weather. So we haven't had any activities on site since Governor Wolf, as far as actual events or games or matches. So starting tomorrow is when this would take effect. I also want to say that this is a draft because as we're currently meeting here as a board, the members of the Kentucky Hartland Athletic Conference are meeting and talking about what they believe. And I think tomorrow our Northern Tier has a conference meeting as well. So it would be beneficial for everyone to have similar rules across the league. And while they're discussing that now, it's, I've been getting updates from, from Mr. Bidwell and it seems that what they're discussing is very similarly aligned with this plan. There could be some adjustments to it until next week and I would appreciate any feedback from board members as we go. The first part of the plan, the first two pages is dedicated to staff and students. There isn't anything different in the way we would operate, our staff and students, coaches and so forth. We're still doing safety checks as far as temperature taking, all protocols with the masks with the coaches. Students do not wear them when they're actively involved in physical activity. Social distancing must, must occur, dugouts anytime it's possible for that to occur. While none of these things are ideal for operating athletics, we all know that if this is what it's going to take to allow the athletics to participate, we've been making it happen. So the, the last two pages of this document refer to spectators. And specifically wanted to share with you the ideas that we came up with for both Bucktail and for Central Mountain. And that would be that, I can't even read that. Is there a reason that's so blurry? So for spectators, not at any time would there be spectators permitted at practices? That's a, a regular occurrence anyway. That's not super unusual, but just felt the need to state that, you know, parents, family members cannot come and observe practices. We would also have no concession stands operating until further notice. If we get to the point where we could open them up, we would certainly like to do that. But just to get started, we would not be having any concession stands open or available. Would take extra staff to clean them. They have not been prepared for the seasons. We're doing what we can to keep school open at this point. Plus, as I mentioned earlier, anybody in the concession stand also counts towards your spectator limit. I'm leaning to, like, I feel strongly that there should be no visitors from opposing teams, that we should save any available seating for our home parents, families of our home team. And those are the, some of the things that are being discussed right now with other members of the league. I think my first priority is our students. For example, football, I want to see not only the football players there, I want to see the band members there, I want to see the cheerleaders. They've worked as well throughout the summer, throughout their camps, and they deserve to have their day at the Friday nights just as much as everybody else. So my priority for spectators would be to our students first regardless of the activity. And then secondly, to our families. And if we have to prioritize that, the priority would go to seniors. All schools and rules and regulations would be in effect at these events. That's not different from any other event. It stays the same. We do, the, the mask order from the governor says that spectators even without outside events would need to wear masks coming into the stadium. They'd need to wear masks, leave the mask on in the stadium. And they would also need to social distance. Our requirement would be if you're members of the same household, would not be required to social distance. So therefore, a family could sit together. But outside that, different families, they should adhere to the six-foot rule. And then specifically for each of the following sports, we've denoted the ticket limit, the spectator limit and so forth. And so for Bucktail tennis, parents could attend, spectators may attend those tennis matches wearing a mask and social distancing. You can stand next to somebody in your own household, but you should distance from others. Same with junior high softball at Bucktail, Bucktail Junior High Football and Cheerleaders. For that, at any event in the stadium such as football or soccer, we're going to limit tickets. And at that point, we'd like to give each of the players, cheerleaders included, each of the students in the activity, four tickets. Those tickets would be free of charge. They would be given to the coach a couple of days before the event. The coach would distribute to the students. The students take them home to the parents. This child gets four tickets, but they don't have four family members and they want to give a ticket to a friend or another family member. They can do that, that's up to them. But it's four tickets per athlete or per cheerleader or band member. That holds true for Bucktail, Junior, Junior High Football as well as varsity football. We get to Central Mountain Golf. Again, whatever spectators are allowed to do at the Clinton Country Club where those matches are held, people would have to abide by those rules. Central Mountain Tennis, cross-country, the same. Central Mountain Volleyball, unfortunately being an indoor event, limited to 25 folks, we could not allow spectators at volleyball until something changes with that. Mr. Miller, could you scroll down a little bit? Please. Central Mountain Junior High Soccer for boys and girls would be the same as Junior High Football at Bucktail, four tickets per athlete participant. Same with varsity soccer, boys and girls. Junior varsity soccer, junior high football at Central Mountains, seventh grade game, eighth grade game, ninth grade game, all count as three separate events. So again, we feel we could give four tickets per athlete or cheerleader. And then we get to Central Mountain Varsity Football because of the number of participants on the football team and visiting teams, game workers, et cetera. We'd have to start out limiting our spectator tickets to two tickets per senior. That includes cheerleaders and band members as well as football players. Currently in discussion with the other P-hack group about limiting the number of visiting players or travel teams, so to speak. If they can reduce from 75 to 50, that's 25 extra tickets. Based on our calculations for the number of kids signed up, we could then give one additional ticket to each participant in the underclassmen grades. We still want to give priorities to the seniors. We understand that's not ideal for every family. It's the best we can do right now. You know, we, we hope that, you know, this is the, the last game or if we have to shut down at any point in time, we want to make sure that our senior families had an opportunity to see their children play in their senior year. Both coaches, or it's all coaches are considering the opportunities to have senior nights early in the season so that in the event that anything gets canceled, those things would have already been in place. I would not charge people for these tickets, which is contradictory to the prices that you've already approved for ticket prices. So they would be free of charge. It would be distributed directly through the coaches to the players. And then they are transferable, people want to give them, but basically no specific ticket, that specific color for that specific event, no ticket, no entry. It's the only way that we can control it. Because we're having smaller folks, we are limiting the game workers. So we need less game workers than we would have traditionally needed for events, less security, less ticket takers, all of those type of things. So we're, we're not really going to make a lot of money off of charging people to come in at that point. And I think if we just get people in safely, let them watch your kids play, let the kids have the contests and get everyone home safely, we can continue to keep as much normalcy as possible during this pandemic. I'm open to suggestions from you and throughout the week from families, coaches, or anybody else who would like to provide some suggestions. But overall, I can tell you, we won't break the order. We will do, we have to, to comply whether we agree or not, but we will comply. So still waiting for some input, as I said, from other teams, the other people around the league. And I'd like to bring something more concrete forward to you next week after people have had a chance to give us some input. So open for questions or suggestions.
I have a question, Dr. Martin, is, we don't have any events that end up effectively being doubleheadered, like where we'd have a JV game followed by a varsity game of some sort or anything like that, do we?
I call those event nights. If we do have any event nights on the schedule, they would be considered different events.
Okay, in that case, would we empty the venue and then require reentry?
Yes. Those, those junior higher, I'm sorry, the junior high football nights, I think are like that. Are they different out? I think they're different times on the same evening. Not sure.
This is Mr. Hall. At Bucktail, junior high football is held on a different evening.
Different evening than varsity, right, Mike?
Yes, that's correct.
Right. Yeah, like, but at Central Mountain, I think seventh grade and eighth grade might be on the same evening, just different times.
Okay, thank you.
Great question. So the question was, is live streaming still available for the community? So I believe that the record online has been able to work out opportunities to livestream everything at Central Mountain. They are running into some difficulty with the ability to, with the brand bandwidth to livestream at Bucktail. Chad and I have been working on getting that equipment. We ordered it back in June or July? June. Equipment's just not coming in. So what we want to do is hardwire Wi-Fi at the stadium and close enough to the tennis courts that we can livestream those events as well. I think the live streaming is a great opportunity for any family, any alumni, anyone who wants to participate in the events. And I'm hoping we can maintain our relationship with the record online and continue to do that even when we get through a pandemic.
Um, President Miller, it's Elizabeth. May I, may I ask a couple of questions, please? Are we open?
Yep, go ahead.
Oh, thank you very much. Um, honestly, you've put, everyone's put so much time and energy into this and I, and I don't want to be nitpicking, but I'm trying to play devil's advocate here. There, there's a couple of things. If I could just go through them and then if you'd like me to restart or questions if I wasn't clear, please, please let me know. The first one was an article that was in the Express Newspaper, I'm going to say a week ago, and I don't have it in front of me. It was from an attorney. It was his opinion that even though people sign waivers and things like that, school districts may still be up for liability due to unforeseen things. So that's one thing I would love for our solicitor, for everyone to consider. Should we ask the solicitor that there's going to be some sort of quote guarantee that the district won't be liable for anything if someone wants to try to do something? So that was my, my first real concern. And also I want to make very clear, I'm really excited about all this starting. So I just want to make sure everyone really understands that. But I also want to, I just hope it, we're doing the best we can. This administration has done a frickin' awesome job. So thank you. But the next one. In the line where it says you must wear a mask, I wish you could consider at, either the verbiage of at all times or went on Keystone Central School District property. I realize the governor has out there and PIA has out there, but if it doesn't stipulate in there, it doesn't say wearing mask at all times or on the property. So that's just one little small detail I found under spectators. And I know this sounds very petty, but I just, maybe a caveat in there somewhere that these free tickets that they cannot be resold for cash value or anything else. I, I know that sounds sort of sad to have me say that, but.
We had that discussion today.
Okay, that, that would be wonderful if they couldn't be able to do that or if, or if they were found to be doing that, that you would have some sort of game plan. I mean, we've, it's sad, like I said, I wish I wasn't bringing these things up.
Well, they don't, they don't have any monetary value. It's just no ticket, no admittance. It's, it's not any different than how schools have run indoor graduation and the event that you can't hold at the stadium. It's a limited amount of tickets and it's to limit the number of spectators inside that can be actually seated.
That's not, that's not to say that there won't be some sort of, you know, underworld market going on for tickets, but that's kind of out of our control.
Okay, okay. Fair enough, fair enough. And also I'm concerned about the Keystone Central School District employees and volunteers. Again, we're back to the enforcement issue. If, if a spectator does come and for whatever reason, they, they don't want to follow the mandates, how, I'm not asking for an answer now, but before I vote on this, I would like to know what the plan is for enforcement. If you have someone who absolutely refuses to keep the mask on or starts a unfortunate altercation or anything else, you understand what I know, you know what I'm saying. Who is the final enforcement person or entity and what powers do they really have? So again, thank you so much for putting this together. You've done a terrific job. Thank you.
So our discussion about the mask enforcement really led to a discussion of, look, if parents wish to come in or family members wish to come into these events, they're going to have to comply. If they don't want to comply, then they're going to be asked to leave or going to be asked nicely, put their masks on, they're not going to comply, they're not going to social distance, we're going to ask them to leave. If we have continuous problems or this is, becomes an issue where the parents who want to come see their kids aren't wearing them and there are some people that are ruining it, unfortunately, if, if they're not following the safety protocols and we can't enforce people following the law, then we're going to shut the whole thing down to spectators. So it is possible that a few people could ruin it for everybody.
Now, in today's world, I would assume that if there's any kind of altercation or anything like that, that's going to be posted on YouTube and on social media for us all to point and laugh at.
No need to promote that, Mr. Miller.
Mr. President, I just have one question. You just, you said about the Northern Tier League. They're having discussions on spectators. So if they would have discussions other than other leagues like allowing visitors because they're smaller teams, smaller team sizes, that was some discussion with some of the parents in Reno area.
And that's possible. I know some of the discussions, some ideas, I'm not necessarily in favor of, but some of the ideas were around the whole league. If regardless, it's Northern Tier here, let's pick soccer, you know, it doesn't matter what you pick. It depends on what the whole league is going to agree on. But instead of giving four tickets to every student for a home game, every student here gets two and the opposing team gets two. So that way two parents can at least go to every event. But I don't really have, that then goes back to the jurisdiction and the enforcement that Elizabeth was referring to. What's going to happen if I have opposing families that are coming in here and they're not wearing masks? What am I going to do to them? Tell them they can't come back? They don't care. So, and is it really necessary to bring all those other families and households into the same event? If we say, hey, we can get to the home event and if that's what we can do, that's what we can do safely. So you can go back and forth on it. We'll see what the Northern Tier leagues think.
I mean, as long as there's consistency through the league, right?
It would be, I would, I want to be a team player with the league. But again, my, my top priority is my students, my parents, and then, and my seniors in that order, my senior parents. Our students, our parents, our senior parents.
Okay, any additional questions for Dr. Martin? If not, we'll move on to our second presentation. I think you'll do the introductions and probably most of the presentation as well.
Probably. Mr. Bidwell is in the P-hack meeting, so I'm the lucky winner for that. Are you able to pull that one up as well, Mr. Miller?
I have no content associated with that.
It should be in the presentation section of the agenda.
There is no, there's no attachment.
There's no attachment? Well, then give me a minute. Share it to your email.
Okay, that's fine.
Coming to you right now.
Okay. Just as a point of reference, Ms. Long, Mrs. Donahay is now on the call.
Okay. So while Mr. Miller's pulling up a shared screen for a presentation, the presentation I'm about to share with you was put together by Mr. Bidwell, the Athletic Director of Central Mountain, while he was the Athletic Director, along with some help from Coach Wallizer and also some help from our Booster Club President and some, some young ladies that are also present here, I think have, have some, some, I'll give them an opportunity to weigh in on their opinion. So a few weeks ago, at the Curricular Co-Curricular Committee Meeting, this same presentation was shared with that group. And that group, the back subcommittee of the board recommended that we bring this forward to the whole board for consideration. And that consideration would be to add a girls wrestling team at Central Mountain High School. You can see on that picture are the two girls that are here tonight. Go back. That's Olivia Miller and Madison Parker, and they've been participating in the boys wrestling program. And we believe that would be a great opportunity for us to have an official girls wrestling program. I do want to make sure you know that this is not currently a sanctioned event by PIA. And we'll explain a little bit more about what that means and what it's going to take to get it sanctioned. So this slide just talks really about some data behind girls wrestling and how the girls wrestling is the fastest growing sport across the nation. And that's been happening for 29 consecutive seasons, 100% growth in the last five years. 28,000 participants in the 2019-20 season plus 5,000 new participants. That's 5,000 more from the previous year. There are 23 states across our nation that do have sanctioned girls wrestling. Pennsylvania currently does not have a sanctioned program. And then there are college opportunities for girls wrestling, 82 collegiate teams across the nation and six collegiate teams in Pennsylvania, including our, our own Lock Haven University. Locally, 239 girls currently wrestle on 139 boys teams in Pennsylvania. We've had these two young ladies participating on our boys team. And the youth program did have two girls participate in that. And again, 26 girls on the P-hack, these seven boys wrestling teams, and that's our Pennsylvania Heartland Conference. So there are 26 girls within the league currently. So why would we want to add a girls wrestling program? The girls wrestling program, the opportunities that that creates falls completely in line with equitable opportunities. We've already talked about the six college teams, but there are currently four teams in Pennsylvania. We would be the fifth team in the state. And those four teams would be Easton High School, JP McEaston is out of the eastern part of the state, JP McCaskey is out of Lancaster, North out of Ganey, out of Pittsburgh, and what's that charter school again? Executive Education Charter School and that we think is out of the Allentown, Philly area, somewhere in that part of the state. There is currently no other teams in this area. I know that there's been some interest in some of the other local teams and neighboring counties and some parents are putting pressure on them because they've heard word that we've been considering this idea. So I do think the idea is going to continue to grow. This is the girls, how the girls benefit. Additional opportunities, this would also include Bucktail female students that could participate in the sport as well, just like our boys would participate in wrestling. The opportunity creates additional avenues for students to connect, engage and feel like they belong. Research supports an increasing student sense of connectedness. Attendance engagement, academic performance can be positively, positively impacted. Another avenue for potential collegiate sports opportunities. Title IX compliance is another big key idea. And this allows girls to effectively compete in a fair venue. Girls against girls, boys against boys. And I think we're all fully aware of the developmental changes that take place during puberty. And I think we're all fully aware of the developmental changes that take place during puberty. And if this is the way that to make the venue more fair and and have the sport more valid, then we think that should be an opportunity that our students should have. So had some conversations with Coach Wallizer as well as the head of the Booster Club. They've had some conversations with their club. So Coach Wallizer would use his current staff to coach both the girls and the boys. It would still be one sport sanctioned, or once the sport is sanctioned, we would be seeking additional coaches. There would be no monetary commitment from the district until the sport would be sanctioned by PLAA. And then we would ask you to make it a sanctioned sport, hire coaches, just like we would for any other sport and so forth. Until then, all the the coaches can volunteer their additional time that takes to do that. Booster Club's going to support the additional travel for the girls to attend girls-only events across the state. And they're also going to supply the uniforms and equipment necessary for the for the girls. We're looking at five to seven tournaments in Pennsylvania. I think most of them were in PA, weren't they, Beth? Okay, and the girls could participate in all-girl tournaments. And they would have some opportunity to wrestle during dual meets or JV matches. I already mentioned the finance, the future cost down the road, once it's sanctioned. And again, we we'd need to go from five teams, we'd be the fifth to 100 teams in the state. So what I would be looking at is at least a two-year window or not more till the state gets five, gets that many teams. It could be longer than that, it's hard to tell. And again, there's no, no financial commitment to add a girls' team now. And even in the future, you would still have the authority to vote as to whether or not you would continue the program once PIAA sanctions it. But I do think it's fair that if the Booster Club and the community is willing to put forth the money and we have the interest at no expense, then I'd like to see us move this forward. And if the program grows and we feel that it's worth adding a second coach, we can address that a couple of years down the road when we need to. So there's been a grassroots effort going on called Wrestle Like a Girl. There's a link there in the presentation, which I will email and will actually upload to the agenda so the public can see it too. And this is the 100-member schools that I've talked with you about. So Coach, I'm going to hand the microphone over to you if there's anything else you want to add. And then ladies, if you'd like to say anything to the board to consider this proposal, then we'll let you have an opportunity as well.
The 100 teams that was put up there, the grassroots effort that's going on right now, they've they've been in communication with the PIAA. And unfortunately, it is in their bylaws that 100 teams or schools have to sanction or recognize a team in that sport before they will officially recognize it and create the playoff system and state tournament and so forth, which they have in other recognized sports. So for us to be the fifth in this push that's going on would be a big thing. I think there would be several local school districts that would follow us in the near future. Lock Haven is known as Matt Town USA in the in the world of wrestling around the country. And that would certainly fall in line with the strong reputation that we have in the sport of wrestling. Girls, you have anything to say? Talk a little bit about your first season.
I started wrestling with like no expectation, just knowing that it was going to be really hard. And no way did I ever imagine that they were just going to even have a thought of starting a girls' team for two girls. But I think it would be a really awesome opportunity and just a really cool thing to be a part of and to say that we were the girls that got to start it at our school and maybe got it sanctioned in our state. Along with what Maddie was saying, some girls in the school would like to wrestle other than just us, but they're too uncomfortable with wrestling with boys on the team. So I think having a girls' team would be nice for girls who are uncomfortable. But other than that, I had no thought that us two wrestling this year on the boys' team would have a start of a girls' team being recommended.
So Olivia, her older brother was on the the high school team, just graduated this past year. And he's off the basic training for the National Guard, Zach, he was our 132-pounder. So Olivia joined the team this year, had never wrestled before. Madison comes from the long line of Packers from the Baldi Go area, school district, a rich lineage of wrestling in her family. I just want to reiterate that us adding would, again, I think get this kind of a snowball rolling, especially in our area as far as other school districts following us. And we'd be kind of pioneering that for the area, which would be great for our school district.
Wonderful.
So I don't know if I mentioned this, but it it's kind of important for you to know that when boys have to wrestle girls in a competition, they're in a no-win situation because they either beat a girl, which was not gentlemanlike, or they got beat by a girl, which either one is not accepted in our culture or society. We have a lot of families who believe that it's okay for their their daughters to wrestle in elementary. But once you hit adolescent, they don't want their daughters wrestling with boys. There, and it isn't any different for families who have boys not wanting them to wrestle girls. By not adding this team and we have interest and we can build interest, I believe that we're taking away potential opportunities that our kids could have. And if there's no additional financial cost to the district, and this is something that our kids want and our kids have a passion to lead and do, then I I fully support that initiative and I would request that the board fully support it as well. So open for questions. My intention would be to put a a line item on the agenda for next week for vote, which you'll see on tonight's agenda, and hope that there's enough for someone to make that motion and second it so we can move forward with the year. Open for questions.
Just one question in my mind. Have you surveyed the girls to see, you have an idea of how many girls may be really interested in participating in this?
Olivia has kind of been putting the word out there and getting some feedback. This first year, I probably would anticipate maybe no more than five, just from some feedback that we're hearing. But we do have two girls who are in the seventh grade in the district right now who have wrestling experience in the elementary grade levels.
I I fully support it. I think it's a great idea. I think that it's it's just a wonderful opportunity for girls. And I'm sure there are a lot more than just five or whatever out there that once the word gets out, I think that we'll have probably a lot of interest in it. So I'm, I think it's a great idea. I think we should support it.
I I don't see any any downsides whatsoever. However, I would say that if we're going to do this, let's let's do it rapidly so that we can capitalize on being the only central Pennsylvania school that has the program.
I totally agree with that. I think to get in on the ground floor of anything like this is a real advantage because I know, I think that's what happened with the girls' soccer here when my girls were playing 20 years ago or whenever. Central Mountain in Keystone was one of the first early teams, their early schools that had girls' teams. And it really was an advantage to get in early. So I think this is no different. So I I totally agree with this. Get in on it, get it started.
President Miller, I, this is Elizabeth. If I could just take a moment, make a comment real quick?
Sure.
Thank you. Yes, from the the work session, I'm sorry, from the committee meeting, we're all very excited about this. One thing we're very not happy about is the PIAA bylaws where it's 100 other schools that'll be participating. Whether or not that ever gets changed, where it's out of our control. But my question is, if we get this sanctioned with PIAA and if there's other schools that wanted, other school districts that wanted to have some sort of tournament or something with our school, but they haven't, that they do not have a formal program yet, is it possible that the team, that the girls' team would be able to do some sort of tournament with them? And then I have one other question after that.
This past season, we do host a JV tournament here at the beginning of January. This past season, we actually added a separate girls' division and did have girls come in from other schools that that don't have officially have a a girls' program recognized. But it was neat to be able to start that, their own division. And so they didn't, again, the biggest deterrent for girls to come out for wrestling right now is the thought of having to feed against a boy. So they didn't have that, that barrier was knocked down. We had a good turnout of girls for that tournament.
Okay, that's encouraging. And so then when there's summer camps and things like that, if, and again, I'm just asking, I'm not looking for an answer. But if there's summer camps, then of course, women or females, girls from other school districts could come. Technically, if there was a, some sort of camp, they could come to our district to to participate, to get their their experience. Is that correct?
Well, Elizabeth, we don't typically run camps as part of our coaches' responsibility. But through our community education program, and we're allowed to do things such as that, again, those that's, those are areas that we could do all kinds of summer camps, and I would like to see us run it through that. But there are camp opportunities at some of the universities, I would think, as this is starting to grow, maybe some clubs around the nation.
Okay, that's, that's great.
There are 1,452 member schools in the PIAA. So the 100 number is really not as insurmountable as it sounds like. We're talking less than 7%.
That's encouraging, both. Thank you so much. And I'm hoping that this becomes very successful and then that administration and cooperation with the board that we get this started at the junior level, maybe next year or the year after. But I'm really excited. Thank you all so working on this.
I think this proposal is specific to nine through 12. But if we are able to expand in the future, then we would be able to, we'll work to do that.
Any further questions or comments? If not, thank you for taking the time out of your evening to come and and pitch this program. Not that I think we need all that much encouragement to to really go along with it. Of course, I'm just speaking for myself. Might not be representing the opinion of all board members.
I just wanted to say thank you to our board. This board has done nothing but support our students and requests that have that have come up. And it's just, it's heartwarming to see a board so cohesively want to do what's right for our kids and what's right for this community and and support them. So thank you to the board members for considering this proposal. And if you have any questions at all during the week or you want some more additional information as some of your constituents talk with you, please forward your questions on between Coach Wallizer, myself, and our administrative team. We will get answers back to you or at least ready for next week.
Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda is hearing of visitors. As long, do we have anyone signed up?
There's no one signed up to speak.
If no one signed up to speak, then we'll give Dr. Martin a moment to get back to her seat, because she's got superintendent's report next.
Look my notes. Just wanted to share with the group that our soft opening was relatively smooth for the the first two days of school. Today was our third day, and I think it equally went pretty well. I know Mr. Condo was watching this building get in. And we had all students' temperature checks and faculty, staff, everybody in before eight o'clock this morning without a hitch. So kudos to all of our principals for for a successful soft opening. As every year, we're adjusting bus schedules and academic schedules. Our staff and students are getting adjusted to the new technology tools that are required of them. We've got new schedules, we've got new safety procedures. So just working out all of those logistics with so many new initiatives and things being put upon us for this year. The rate of community spread continues to be in the low designation, which is under nine cases per 100,000 within a seven-day period. Those numbers get updated on Fridays at noon. I do suspect maybe with some of the recent positive cases at Lock Haven University that some of those students would be attributed to Clinton County. And therefore, we may move into the moderate range for next week. On August 31st, which is earlier this week, the USDA released nine nationwide waivers related to the Summer Food Service Program and Seamless Summer Options. If you recall, these are the waivers and the the programs that we used over the summer to continue to feed students even when we were not in school, spring and summer. So these waivers have permitted us to provide free lunches to every student as of today, up through the month of December. Was it today or yesterday? Yesterday? Yesterday. All the cart items are still for sale and students will need money in their accounts if they want to buy the all-cart items. But the standard lunch is free for any student. And some good news, Gianna Renzo, a senior at Central Mountain High School, has been working on a project over the past few months to create a robot for the 2020 NASA TI Codes Contest. This contest challenged a team of students, teams of students, to improve a process or create an innovative project for the International Space Station. Gianna's team is called the Germaphobes. And it has, her team has advanced to the fifth and final round of the competition. The team has never met in person. All of their collaboration was done virtually to build a robot. They've had the opportunity to meet engineers from Texas Instruments and NASA throughout the project and gain some great experiences along the way. Out of 100 teams across the country, the Germaphobes is one of 10 teams selected to compete in the final round. Mrs. Sue Hannah, a teacher at Central Mountain High School, has also served as a mentor to Gianna and her team. So there is a video that is, it's a brief video. I want to show it to you very quickly. I just have to log into the Zoom meeting.
That was sent out through the email.
Was it? Yes. Do you want to play that one too?
I can probably pull that up.
We're making making quite the tag team tonight.
Or maybe it wasn't. I thought we had that there, but I guess not. All right.
Here it comes to you anyway.
Okay.
What you're getting is my report, at the bottom of my report on today's date is a link to the YouTube video. I think some of you may recognize Gianna. She's done some presentations to the board before.
It uses an electric fan propulsion system and ultrasonic sensors to navigate its surroundings. A robot is made of a PVC frame and plexiglass siding. It has a cylindrical tube in the center to model the UV light functionality, and it has two tension fittings on each side to hold the drones in place.
Using the TI MOSS module, we connect an external 18-volt battery pack to three high voltage LED strips. To automatically control the LED strips, the TI inspired continuously sends requests to TI Innovator Hub to determine how far the nearest object is using the ultrasonic ranger module.
With TI Basic, we program conditional statements in for loops that control the light strips with analog signals with a distance of less than 15 centimeters.
Our fan just passed through 3.3 volt output points on the hub. When the distance sensor on the germaphobe nears a wall in the ISS, the fan will stop and it will sanitize for 15 seconds, at which point it will then reverse direction.
In a separate program, we smoothly accelerated our fan CC motors, giving a while loop that gradually increased speed. Eradicating harmful microbes.
Increasing the astronauts' power to live.
Promoting resource conservation.
Increasing the quality.
Allowing for future trips to be safer and more efficient.
At the end of the video, there's a place to vote, if you vote, and this, the winning team gets the wins basically through the number of views and people voting for them. So we'll be pushing that out to everyone too in the district. I know all board members will get the link, and the more people that watch it and click on them, the, the more popular they'll be coming onto the championship.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Dr. Martin? Not, we'll go to committee reports. Mr. Probert, curricular, co-curricular? Yes, Mr. Miller. We had our monthly meeting on Tuesday, August 18th. We actually had a couple of curricular items at this meeting for the first. We, Ms. Megan Hall came to discuss the elementary report card revisions, which I was happy to see after raising my children in district and not really understanding the report cards. It was a much, much needed revision. So they're much easier to understand now. Instead of a rating scale of one to five, there is some, some language there on beginning approaching or meeting the guidelines. Maybe Dr. Martin can discuss that a little more.
Megan's going to join us next week and provide the same presentation to the whole board and the public that was presented at the meeting. So that was a recommendation from your group, so she'll be here next week.
That's great. We also heard from Mr. Lynch and the CTC director. Apparently there's two programs in CTC that we haven't, any students rolled in for years. One's agricultural productions, the other is auto battery repair. He's recommending that we, we take these off of the, off of the roll, because we have to, according to the state. Co-curricular items, we discussed. The return to play. Basically, all that stuff that was in our safety plan, Mr. Bidwell went over sanitation, the practices, return to, return to play, which I guess is going well at this point, from what I understand. We also talked to the, Mr. Bidwell gave a presentation, the girls wrestling proposal, which you just saw. So we are recommending to the board that we, we adopt that program. We heard from, we heard some proposals from, for live streaming and student events, and obviously we went with the record online to do that, and they've been doing a very good job getting started, although they have some, some hitches in their plan at Bucktail. We also had a facility dedication request, and I think that went to the facilities committee?
Facilities and co-curricular, I need to touch base with the people who requested that about some financing.
Okay.
The funds, actually not financing, it's really funds just to, funds necessary to complete the dedication.
Okay. I, I think I seen it in your minutes in the facilities committee in the recent discussion.
Both, both committees felt that they saw no reason to, not to move that forward to the board for approval. It's just that neither committee felt strongly that, they felt strongly that the district should not put the bill for the dedication, because that's been the history of the district.
Right. And that's about all we had. Okay, thank you, Mr. Probert. Mr. Johnston, facilities?
Hey, thank you, Mr. Miller. Excuse me, we had, the committee did meet last week, on August 25th, and that was actually, you know, prior, about a week prior to the start of school. We did have a, a really good report, project update from the folks at McClellan, Lissa Wingonfield, Wingonfield, and Chris Howe. They reviewed the entire first phase of the project, of the energy project that has been, you've been undergoing here since early in the summer, late spring. At this point, most of all of the projects are pretty much done. At that point, the lighting upgrades were like at 98%, and of course, that was like a week ago, but I think they're still waiting on some parts for the other buildings. The other projects, the mechanical insulation, the door sweeps, that kind of thing, those are all completed. I think as far as the HVAC at the middle school and at Robb Elementary, those are, I think, as far as I know, Robb's is complete. And the middle school, I think they're still working on the area in the gym, because they were kind of delayed there because of not being able to get into that, that particular area of the building, but that should be done soon. And I guess they're going to test the boilers here in about another week too, and both schools. So things are, are looking very good in those, in that phase one. We also discussed phase two of the conservation measures, the projects that will be coming up next summer. Most of those are upgrades, the upgrades that we've talked about at, at Bucktail, the lighting upgrades, the building envelope upgrades, the mechanical insulation upgrades, and of course, the HVAC, the air conditioning and so on, the upgrades there. There were about four other projects that they had suggested we might want to consider, however, those are, of course, all dependent upon how our funding goes, but all of that funding in our, in the bond air monies have to be spent, and all the projects have to be completed within a three-year time span. So there were some other suggestions they made for mostly some other things that, that we may want to consider for Bucktail and a couple other things at the middle school. They will be discussing those with the administration over the next couple of months, between now and the end of the year. And I think we will have a better idea where our, our, with the 10-year plan come the end of the year, when this is all, all done. And I think maybe it's a good time to revisit the 10-year plan. The committee talked about it a little bit. To revisit it, probably in January or February, we start to look at the, at the upcoming budget for, for this next year. We also, one other thing that I want to mention, the McClellan did some extra projects, some things that were not necessarily, they just kind of came up as they went along, and they, they did them at no charge to the district, and those came to, they're almost $50,000 of things that they did, kind of as a, you know, as a free, free projects for us as, as they went along. They also wanted, made it a point, they sent a letter to thank Harlan Dickey and Rhonda Phillips for all the work they did. And I just, I just want to go on record as saying that I just want to thank all of our staff that worked. So, I mean, they put in tons and tons of hours over this, over this past three or four months, getting all the buildings ready to be, to be used this week. And so I, I, they, they've just done a great job, and I want to thank them all. We, you mentioned, the other committee mentioned about the naming request. I think the recommendation, the committee, I think the, the group had approached Dr. Martin about this through the policy 702.1, had wanted originally to paint the name on the, on the, on gym floor. However, because of the, the expense involved with that, we suggested, and I guess it would be our recommendation to the board, to use a, dedicate a plaque that would be in that, Mr. Hanbeck's name, at that, somewhere in the gym, as opposed to doing that because of the, the floor having to be stripped every so many years, and it would be a very cost prohibitive thing. So that, that would be the recommendation of our committee at this point. You'll see also later on in the agenda here, there's a couple of change orders that we brought for the middle school. There was a, some ceiling tiles and so on that needed to be replaced that they came across that I don't think they were anticipating originally. So there's a change order for that, and also there was some ductwork that needed to be realigned in the building. And there's also a change order listed there for those, those two items. The other couple of things, there really was, those are the main items that we, we had discussed. We talked a little bit about the trash compacters, and I don't think, I'm not sure where we're going to go with that. I don't think we're going to be doing anything with, with those at this point, possibly Bucktail, but I'm not sure where that's, where that's going to go. But so other than that, I think that's the, the highlights of the meeting, and we're going to meet again here at the end of the, at the end of the month, I believe on the 29th. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Miller, I have a question for the, Mr. Strauss, Mr. Johnson. The sale of the building, how it come along with the ticket?
That was, at this point, we, we don't still have the appraisals back yet. They're, they're still working on those. I'm not sure.
As of yesterday, they weren't here. I didn't ask today, but Susan, I'm guessing they didn't come in anyway. Yeah.
Jackie, this is Rob. I did meet with both the appraisers, and they indicated probably about two to three weeks till they had the appraisals back to me. And that, I met with, I think, last Friday, the second appraiser, so that's in the works.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, up next would be Finance Committee, Mr. Strauss. Finance did not meet, correct?
We did not meet. The first day of school, I don't know why the business manager and superintendent thought it would be a bad time, but, you know, we, we went with their idea and said, no, we'll cancel it.
Okay.
Much appreciated.
Personnel and Negotiations Committee items will be covered in exec if there are any. Mrs. Smith, I don't know if there's anything you could say here?
Nope, our next meeting is scheduled for September 21st.
Okay. Mr. Koch, policy?
Policy committee is scheduled to meet on September 9th. That's next Wednesday at 10 o'clock AM. All board members and members of the administration are invited to attend that meeting. I guess we'll still be meeting in the conference room there in the administration building. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's how it was advertised, I think.
Yep. So I may have something to present to the board next week after the meeting on the night.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Strauss, anything on safety and security?
We are meeting next Wednesday.
Okay. Information items, you have the treasures report. Are there any questions or comments on the? If not, under item G, board, we have PSBA officer elections. As long, would you care to speak on what that's all about?
The board has to authorize the board secretary to cast votes for PSBA officers. The, the officers are listed on the PSBA website. If you want to see their information, I don't know if you click. I guess you can click right on the four docs and it'll take you there. And I did want to make note that my name is on the school board secretary's forum for a two-year term.
Okay, thank you. As you'll note, that there are, there are actually only really, it's like one candidate, except for the vice president position. So most of those are pretty much winner by default. Any questions or comments on PSBA officers? Okay, item H, we have no items for policy. Item I is minutes for the facilities committee, the curricular, co-curricular, and the work and voting sessions from last month. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. Item J, J1, bills for payment. Questions or comments? J2, this is a, an agreement for Gordian for work performed in the Central Mountain Middle School ceiling, not to exceed $11,037.99 paid for by the capital fund. I believe that item J3 is also related to Central Mountain Middle School work, $6,750 paid for by the capital fund. That's for PNH metal. Any questions on those two items? J4 is municipal waste. That is to approve the service proposal from JJ Peters for the removal of municipal waste from Liberty Current Elementary from July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2021. They were the successful bidder, it appears. Questions or comments?
This is Elizabeth. I know it's out of our control, but I think I learned this, maybe I'm wrong, so please correct me at, at the facilities meeting, or I might have misunderstood. From what I understand, if schools do ever close down, that we still, it's because it's a contract, we still have to pay the trash haulers, even though the building might be, even if a building is closed. Is that correct? Did I hear that correctly?
We would pay rent for the dumpster because we would physically have it. However, we're not paying the tipping fees or the hauling charges because we're not generating any trash. So we would only be responsible for dumpster rent. Does that answer your question?
Oh, yes. Thank you very much.
Sure, no problem. Item J5, Likecoming Clinton joined her board agreement. This is for the student assistance program, not to exceed $20,000 paid for by the general fund.
It's a renewal.
This is a renewal. It's something we do every year. Any questions or comments? Not, last item under business is J6. This is NWEA MAP Growth Basics. It's professional development. This is for our, our assessment program that we're, that we're now using.
Yeah, this would be for grades two through eight, and this professional development would be part of the training, and that's a lot of with the program to train the people who will be using it, and then how to use the data to impact student instruction.
Right, we've already purchased the product. Now we need to learn how to use it.
Yes.
And that's for, not to exceed 11,900, and that's paid for by title grant funds. Questions or comments? If not, item K1 is personnel. This is our normal leaves of absence, employment. This is our normal leaves of absence, employment, transfers, resignations and retirements. Any questions or comments on this one?
Mr. President, I have a question.
Um, I might have an answer, maybe somebody else does.
No, you might have an answer. Is it appropriate to discuss a person that's being hired? Or should that be done in the executive session?
If we're discussing a particular person and not a position, then that should be limited to executive session.
I'll keep it for that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm thinking of a marketing position, but that's.
Okay. Item L, L one, athletics personnel. This is obviously our normal stuff. I think that there's a lot of volunteers, there are some game workers that we are hiring and there is a single resignation, I believe. Questions or comments?
I didn't, I didn't talk to Kelly, but I just, I'll have them on for the tab.
So at the board's request last month, we did not hire some additional fall coaches. But because you gave me the authority to do so, the night before first practice, I did authorize the fall coaches only, that were on that previous agenda, no winter or spring. So we'll pull those names over for next week as well.
So they'll be on the agenda to be voted on?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Item L two is an athletics donation. And this is a motion to approve, a motion to approve the acceptance of an anonymous donation of a youth kicking net that values six hundred ninety-five dollars, brand new. And I think that's about all we know about this.
That's all I know about. I don't know who it's coming from, the, the donor wishes to remain anonymous.
Okay. Anything on that? Item L three, this is, this would be a motion to approve the addition of girls wrestling in Central Mountain High School. We already had a presentation on this matter. Is there any further discussion? All right. Well, that brings us to the end of the work session agenda. There will be a executive session about ten minutes after adjournment of this, this meeting. For those of you who are at home, I did send the Zoom link to you, so you should already have it.
Mr. President, I have a few things I'd like to discuss, though.
Okay.
A question on safety, safety and security, but this, I think needs to be done now because I've had quite a few parents. And I know it's nobody's fault. But seeing the kids outside, I had a chance twice now to see the kids outside of recess. That is the most depressing, saddest thing I've ever seen. Kids six feet apart, look like they're spaced out like it's a Russian Gulag prison, where they can't play, they can't run, they can't jump, well, they can jump in a little circle, it seems. And I, when they got today, when I drove up by one different school, I saw the whole, everybody spaced out, and parents have told me this. But then when I drove by a school in a different district, their kids are outside playing without masks and having fun. I'm not saying we're wrong, I'm not saying our school district is right. But at some point, if we're letting kids play football, tackle without having a mask, how can we sit there until a five or six, seven-year-old, they can't play outside for recess? It's absurd. Common sense has to come into play here sooner or later. I'm afraid we're going to start losing more kids from our school district to homeschooling. He says some of the threats I've heard, but let's be honest, that happens a lot. Either the moment, parents say things they don't mean. But I do know four kids have already been pulled. Some of it is because of this. And I'm just curious if there's anything we can do. It's not our, I don't look at our district as our fault. This is the state setting the rules, but if we're going to have a rule that says kids can play football, play soccer and run without a mask on, then how is that any different than the kids at recess? It's an activity, it's outside. I think there's enough problems, probably psychologically, I'm worried about kids that wear their mask all day, let alone outside. They need that time to run and be free. I'm just curious if any other board members have heard anything from any parents addressing that. I mean, I've told them, I've referred them to the principal, I've referred them to Jackie. You know, what they do after they talk to me, I have no idea. But I mean, if it sounds like I'm upset, I am. I mean, it's so depressing to see that today when I drive by, it's depressing the first day of school, I tell. It just breaks your heart. And it seems to me, we're in the business of educating the kids and keeping them safe. Or part of being safe is mentally safe. And that may, might be running around a little bit. Because like I said, if, if we're not going to let the kids have recess, then I make a motion next week that we cancel all sports. Because what's the difference? If they're active and they're playing the sport, and you know, playing football, you're tackling somebody, nothing gross, but there's spit, there's blood, there's everything fine. Recess is probably a little safer than that. I mean, just a little less physical contact, but the kids have to play. I mean, Jack, you can speak to much more than that because you've been a teacher, you know. I mean, don't the kids need that?
Welcome to our frustration, Randy. I mean, you've been here with us, but superintendents have been talking about this since all these guidelines have come out and then changed and then got more restrictive and so forth. It makes it very difficult to, challenging to get kids back in school with all these additional restrictions. And the more, the higher restriction we make on our students and our staff, yes, it may be safer, but at the same time, it also decreases the learning and the appropriate development of students. So finding the right balance between keeping kids and staff and students safe as our first priority and our main goal, which is growing students, the whole student, has been the biggest challenge for not only myself, my entire administrative team. And then knowing that we can have athletics and at times not have students' masks. There is no rhyme or reason in my mind why things are so different. However, we are following the compliance of the law. I, I can't speak to what other districts are doing. I have not fielded any emails or phone calls with regards to parents upset about recess, I will tell you that. I have witnessed myself several students, high school and middle school, outside taking mass breaks. I know they're making it work. Mr. Riley's here in person. Our kids have been so wonderful. And even though they may not agree with it, our staff may not agree with it, if that's what it takes to get our kids in school where they belong, that's what they're doing. So this, the staff cares about them, will do what we can, but at this point in time, that's, it, it's out of our control. But I agree with you. It's, it's the same thing the superintendents have been saying to Pedro Rivera, to the Department of Health, how if we can't, if we can't do a phonics lesson without a mask, how can we have athletics going on? And even wrestling is in the off-season, but that's permitted to happen right now. Now, I, I wouldn't recommend canceling that. I wouldn't support that recommendation because if that's what we're allowed to do, I mean, that's important to those kids too. So I would not support your recommendation, but I understand your frustration.
At some point, we have to stand up for the kids, all like you're doing. I agree with you. We have to stand up for the kids.
Well, email your legislators. Email your legislators. You've got to talk to them, you've got to tell them your position on it. And again, trying to balance the appropriate risk with the appropriate education is the biggest challenge we have.
I think the problem that people have with it, and that I have with it, with all of these mandates and edicts and whatever you want to call them, is the inconsistencies in it. I mean, I just, Randy makes a very valid point. I think it is ridiculous that we can't allow kids out on a, in fresh air to take their mask off and run around and have a, and blow off a little steam, especially elementary kids. I, I, I think we've taken common sense out of the equation here in a lot of cases. I know that that's in short supply anymore, it seems, but I know what you're saying, Jackie. It's, you guys are tearing your hair out. I know that. Because you, your hands are pretty much tied.
There is nothing that states that teachers cannot give kids mass breaks during recess. There's nothing that states they can't run and jump. They're, they can play, they can use the equipment where those, they, they don't have to stand there. Part of what you may be seeing, and I don't know because I didn't see the same thing you saw, but I noticed that we haven't had kids in school for five months. They've come back a little timid. They don't know what they're allowed to do, what they're not allowed to do. They're a little more docile than they were when they left. I think they'll get settled in. I think our teachers will get settled in. But it's, it's been quiet. I don't know, Nick, if you've experienced the same thing. Kids have been overall a little more quiet and docile.
I, I feel like that has to be stated. Because what we're trying to do is get these kids back here. And yes, it's been five and a half months since they've been back and they are shell shocked, to say the least. But our teachers are making the best of it. Kids are making the best of it. We had three fantastic opening days. And I, and I would tell you, I was worried, up at night worried about it, but it was fantastic. And yeah, there's a little bit of, oh, Mr. Riley, I can't believe I have to walk this way in the hallway. But then they do it and they're okay, and they're smiling, or at least looks like they're smiling. They tell me they are because I have to ask them because I can't see all the time. But we're trying to make the best of the situation. I don't disagree with Randy that sometimes it doesn't seem right, some of the things that are going on. But now we're just trying to follow the guidelines like we can. And the kids are doing a really nice job with it. And I have to say, I'm very proud of them and the teachers and the community for the support that we've had.
I would tend to think that eventually as, as, I, I hate the word unprecedented and I hate the words new normal as well, but I'm going to say new normal. As we adapt to whatever the present is going to be, I would say that it's probably going to be a bit of a work in progress until everybody figures out what their comfort level is. Right now, they don't know that. They've been back for three days now? Well, two days really, because, you know, it was staggered opening, so. Yeah, I, I, I got to say, if I was in that position, I, I, I wouldn't know what to do. I'd be walking into a building that looked totally strange to me because of all of the measures that have been put in place. You know, there's plastic bags over water fountains. Yeah, it's, it's just enough that you walk in and it's like, okay, where am I? This is not the, this is not the building I used to know. Now, that's a transition everybody goes through when they move from one building to another because it's a new school. But I mean, this, this has, this has to be the, something the strangest thing that some of these kids have ever experienced. And I don't know what we do about it other than maybe just give it a little bit of time and see where it shakes out. Except we're on day three.
Thank you, Randy, for bringing this up. And, and your comments and Bo, totally agree. And I will say this, I mean, I saw something so beautiful today. And I wasn't watching, I wasn't looking for it. I was at my house and I was doing some things and I, I saw the principal coming out of the building. And he's been out of the building doing things, I won't mention any names. And going from cars to cars and talking to the parents who are picking them up and helping them and making them feel confident. I'm just watching. And it was just a beautiful thing to see the principal out there working with the citizens, you know, or picking up their kids and seeing their facial expressions. Yes, they were wearing masks, but you can still tell. It was just a beautiful thing. I know the administration and the teachers and the kids, I couldn't be prouder. So thank you all very much.
Anybody else want to weigh in on this? All right, Randy, did you have something else? Okay. Well, does anybody else have anything to come before this board? If not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. And like I said, we'll come back for exec in about ten minutes.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Okay, there's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
No, second.
Thank you. There is a second. And without objection, we stand adjourned.